...of major maintenance, which is defined in the agreement as basically something quite expensive and unexpected that's come up. Where again, that piece of equipment, likely a pump or something of that nature, has been used exclusively by the first mover community. Again, that portion of the cost wouldn't be reimbursed, but the rest would. And then, we also recognize that the first mover community is likely not going to be coming out of pocket in cash to pay for such an improvement. They're likely going to be financing that through bonds or SRF loans. And so, the formula actually provides for compensation for whatever the late movers community's share of the interest cost would have been to borrow those funds in the first place. So what we're hoping is, by the time the late mover community comes to the table, that they're buying their share of plant capacity with a deduction basically for depreciation, the life of the plant, any amount of equipment that's been purchased and the depreciation on that, and also compensating the first mover community for the costs of the interest carry for those plant improvements between the time it was installed and the time that late mover community comes to the table. So that, in a nutshell, is basically what the formulas show. This is a term sheet. Term sheet will be drafted into a formal agreement. It may be narrative rather than what's shown here. So in a nutshell, that's what we're after.
But you said that this is a way that both communities can participate, and the worst thing that happens to Edgerton is they build a plant with too much capacity and it makes it operate inefficient. But there's also requirements for Gardner to produce a certain amount of sewage, otherwise it gets penalized.
That's-
So in addition to helping pay for the plant, we're expected to generate sewage whether we have it or not.
And the reason for that is, if Edgerton did Plan A, which was just to build a plant on their own, they'd build a 250,000 gallon a day plant. It would have no capacity for gardener's waste. In order to build a plant that's more efficient and more economical for most communities, Edgerton needs to know it's going to have enough waste to operate that plant efficiently. Jeff Keller will tell you about the worst thing that could happen is you build a half million gallon a day plant, and you send 50,000 gallons a day of waste. You just can't make- you can't keep the bugs alive, the treatment train doesn't work. And so, the commitment of the City of Gardner is, until Edgerton has enough flow in order to keep that plant and that treatment train working, that it will send some waste to that plant going on. If intermodal develops quickly, if other things develop out there, they are able to generate enough waste to that plant, there's actually a point at which the City of Gardner could simply walk away. We don't want to do this anymore. We can walk away. And that basically, that point is basically at the point where there's enough waste coming, consistent waste coming from Edgerton alone, that the plant can operate efficiently. And so, there's an option for the City of Gardner to be able to say, you know, we don't like this, we want to do something else. Thanks, it was great while it lasted, but we're going to send our stuff someplace else.
And to make you feel a little bit better about that, what we would be diverting is the base flow for the south lift station, that's 150,000 gallons a day. So we're not giving anything or sending anything that we can't produce. It's going there today. So it's just a matter of, instead of sending it to Kill Creek, we send it down to the Edgerton plant. So we're not taking a risk there. We've got the waste that we can send there.
And how many, I guess, residences or commercial buildings produce 150,000 gallons per day now, for that sector of the-
Well, I don't know what the acreage is or the number of buildings is in the south lift station basin, but I can tell you that the Walmart facility goes to the east lift station, which then goes to the south. And we also have another station or two that are going to the south lift station as well. One of them is Nike, that's taken all the flow from the Nike School and going to the south. 183rd Street Lift Station has a pretty sizable residential area going to it, and it's going to the south. So all of that, it's quite a lot of flow, considerable amount. And in a storm, when we have the peak flows, we can pump 2,500 gallons a minute up the south, and right now, we're tapped out. That's how much capacity we have, is 2,500 gallons a minute in a peak. So if it had to do it all day long, we'd be in trouble. It doesn't, as the wet well fills up, but it doesn't have to go all day. So it's, we're at the peak of that station. We need to get rid of some of it.
And how much development, let's call it intermodal development, since that's really what this is for, how much intermodal development would we have to have to justify 250,000 gallons per day? Either an acreage or millions or hundreds of thousands of square feet of space?
Well, the 1.5 MGD would be the ultimate developed flow for the basin, for the lift station at 191st and Waverly. And that's the basin you're talking about. I don't know how many buildings are over here.
How many, I mean, let's talk in terms of warehouse space. How many hundreds of thousands of square feet of warehouse space would it require? Because my understanding is, right now, the intermodal only has something like 40,000 square feet planned, right, or under contract?
I have no idea.
You're asking staff to speculate on things that we really can't speculate on, because there's different kinds of development that will produce different flows. So it depends on what kinds of development, how that development is mixed between residential, commercial, industrial.
I mean, I specified intermodal development, so-
I will tell you, and you probably know more about that than I do, that if you look at what is projected, it's about five or six years out before Edgerton would have enough flow to get to that, what the document defines as the key development point, the point of which I talked about earlier, where you wouldn't be required to send flow anymore.
Which is how many gallons per day?
It's 200,000 gallons a day.
So it's five years away for Edgerton to produce 200,000 gallons per day?
Based on projections. Could be more, could be less. I mean, no one knows, but-
And so, a similar amount of time for Gardner. Is that right? I mean, we have 250,000 capacity, it would take five years to fill that?
Again, it depends on the type of development. If it's all residential, it'd be less than that. If it's all warehousing, it would be that much or more.
I mean, it's going to be in the-
It's in the freight corridor though, right?
I mean, it's going to be industrial development, right?
No, no.
It's not like that's decided yet.
I mean, it could be commercial development on the Garden Road.
Okay, commercial.
It could be restaurants, could be hotels.
Could be more hotels, more apartments.
Yeah. And it could be warehouse. And it also depends on what the ultimate annexation looks like in that area as well. I know we've been talking about Waverly Road East. You know, if that industrial piece is in Gardner, then that would probably be warehouse or similar type developments. You know, if they were to produce a food products plant like Unilever, for example, or Eagle, then, I don't know if that's the right company name.
See if that's West Holden.
Yeah, West Holden. You know, they're going to be a higher sewer user than another Coleman, for example. So you know, per square foot impact is going to be variable based on the use.
Well, how about if we just take two businesses that are already in Gardner, and that would be TradeNet, which is mostly industrial, right?
Commercial, yeah, commercial.
Commercial. And then Coleman. What are the specifications for their waste usage?
I really don't know. We don't break it down normally by a particular business. It's done by acreage, and it's done at a commercial rate or a residential rate. Multi-family is same as residential in that case, just depends on density. And it's about .018 to .025 cubic feet per second of flow per acre. And it doesn't matter really what kind of business it is or anything else, and I know that doesn't mean anything to you, but it's about 500 gallons, 500 gallons a minute per acre, I guess, basically. It's 448 times the CFS gives you gallons per minute.
Well, the water utility currently has a discount rate for users that have over 40,000 gallons-
Right.
-a month, right?
Correct.
TradeNet doesn't use more than 40,000 gallons a month.
I don't believe so, no.
And neither does Coleman.
Coleman certainly, certainly wouldn't know.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's, you know, you have to figure that it's some, you know, even, you know, over the course of a month, I mean, that's, even if they were using that much, it's a dozen gallons a day. 1.55, something like that, right?
Correct, something of that nature, yeah.
Not enough that it's going to, that those two businesses would push capacity at an alarming rate.
But 500 gallons, right, times a minute, times 60 minutes in an hour, right?
No, that's, wrong CFS equals 448 gallons a minute. And we're looking at .019 or .025 per acre CFS. So I can't do the math in my head, I'm sorry.
But I thought you said 500 gallons per day per acre is, I mean, 500 gallons per minute per acre of land use for-
If I did, then I misspoke. It's, the conversion factor is 450 gallons, 448 gallons per one CFS. One CFS equals 448 gallons per minute.
Oh, okay. If you can't actually say no, I can't.
I think we're getting a little off track of what this business item's for. What we're trying to decide right now is whether we want to spend a little bit for the capacity that we have right now and have a cheaper expansion in the future, or do we want to pay a lot in the near future with a larger expansion than we need at the time? That's what we're talking about right now. Correct. Okay. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't the only one thinking that.
So what direction would the council like to go?
I move we authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement to fund additional treatment capacity at Edgerton's future treatment plant and other improvements for the project.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Broxman, that we authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement to fund additional treatment capacity at Edgerton's future treatment plant and other improvements. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Wait a second. One more discussion here. What, I still need to know, what is the cost? I mean, just a wild cost.
Well, wild wouldn't do anything good.
Well, I mean, you know those numbers.
A wild guess, because wild guesses get published at 47%.
All right, well, nine, 9.42 million, over what term? I saw in here 30 years or-
It doesn't matter. What we're paying for a little bit now is going to be less than what we pay for, or a lot later, no matter what the numbers are.
For a lot less capacity. And for capacity right now-
But for cheaper expansion.
-capacity we don't need. So what is that number?
It pushes it off less.
I think it's an important number.
It's automatically going to be less than what we're paying if we don't do this.
It's going to make your rate go up though, right?
It'll make it go up a whole lot more if we don't do this.
If we need the capacity, which we don't.
We will at some point. That's what this whole thing is. We know we're going to need that capacity, so do we want to pay a little bit now, or do we want to pay a lot later?
Not a little bit, it's nine, it's 10 million dollars.
It's different than 25 million, which is a whole lot less.
Why can't we just get some, you know-
Because there's too many variables in it.
Let's say 10 years of financing, 10 million dollars.
You know what's going to happen tomorrow? Nobody does with interest rates. So there's too many variables.
Well, I mean, you know what the-
Jeff has something.
So if you borrowed 9.5 million, I think I ran, at 2.5%, which is roughly speaking the current SRF rate, 20 level payments, $800,000 a year.
And so, what does that do to your rate?
That's a part we can't answer, because there's other variables. And just like any other budget, there's other sewer projects, there's things that we might refinance.
Expiring debt.
There's, right, dropping off debt, depends on how far we're pushing the Kill Creek wastewater treatment plant expansion.
Motion on floor.
Well, hang on. $800,000 divided by 19,000 people. Can we do it that way?
I move we pause all the previous questions.
That's $42 a person, times five. That's $200 here.
There's a motion, motion Morrow, second Broxman, that we call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Question on the floor. Motion Harrison, second Broxman, that we enter into an agreement, that we authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement to fund additional treatment capacity at Edgerton's future treatment plant and other improvements for the project. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Okay. That is it for new business. Brings us to council updates. First update is on line protection insurance for utility customers. Melissa.
The National League of Cities is tackling one of those age-old questions that municipalities deal with related to maintenance of the line between where the city's responsibility ends up near the sidewalk or curb, and then where it actually physically enters a resident or business. And they have come up with an opportunity that is one of the, is a concept where homeowners and businesses in the community can actually sign up for their plan to protect between where the city stops and where it enters their home and their home insurance, and they might pick up on certain types of things. So the concept here is to provide a conduit to our residents to access this type of insurance that hadn't previously existed. And the National League of Cities has a program like that, requiring their interest from council to bring out a representative to talk about the program and sort of how it would work.
I have a question. So do you know, Melissa, maybe, I mean, maybe not under this presentation, but is this a, I know businesses would use this as a revenue opportunity. Is this a revenue opportunity for the city, or is it a break-even, basically? The money goes directly to this company?
There's two different ways you can do it, but what we were looking at recommending to council is, where basically this is just for the homeowner to enter and to have an agreement with an insurance company to provide insurance between where the city stops and where it enters their home.
And would we bill for that?
We have options on how you can do that, but no, they can directly bill that. We wouldn't be in it other than we would be getting the word out there to our residents specifically, especially critical for those folks who are in older neighborhoods in town that have trees that have roots that are substantive, that can impact those lines. Cost is fairly minimal. There are a couple of entities out there that, but the one that we have worked with is the one that we seem to find has a fairly good reputation, and it's through partnership of the National League of Cities.
So that, this is only the city utilities, so it wouldn't be the gas line from the main?
No, this is just for your water. You can do it for one or both, water or wastewater. The city would basically just say, yes, we're okay with you splitting our residence.
Okay. So it's meter to the house, and then wall to the main?
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly. So we've never, I've never seen anything like this in the 15 years of local government service that I'm in, and I'm sure Mr. Preston can comment, maybe on a couple more, maybe one or two more years.
A few.
Few, yes.
Only because I'm older, though.
He's only a digital, that's what I found out last week. So basically, we were pretty excited to hear about something like this, because frequently we will get contact from residents who are frustrated when they find out that they have a line backup, especially on the sewer side, that they have no coverage for. And it provides that coverage at a fairly small dollar amount per month or per year. I think it was around $100 a year for the coverage, if I remember correctly.
Actually, I think it's less than that.
Yeah, so it's not any more than that. And to be able to know that if you live in an area with trees, that you've got that protection for what can be up to several thousand or close to 20,000, depending on how nice your basement is, it's quite a nice service to be able to.
Some of the older communities in the northeast part of Johnson County have adopted this program, and their residents are participating in it. Again, the city really doesn't have any interest in it, particularly if we choose to go that route. I don't think the city's looking necessarily to make money on something like this. But it gives homeowners, I think, a more comfortable feeling that the city logo is on the letter, that the city has endorsed the program as a private deal between the insurance company and the homeowner, but that we know what's going on, and we know the company is viable and will do what they say they will do.
So they're not really, I mean, they could solicit today, in all fairness, right?
They could.
This is just a matter of-
I've approached, saying, we'd like to get consent from your governing body, because they really want your approval before entering into town. So that you don't get the call as this is a scam or whatever, or we can send out something in the newsletter ahead of them listening. I think their next round of offering insurance would be in the fall, within their spring offering. They only do it two times a year where he can enroll.
So we'd need to make the decision throughout prior to the fall and start advertising it in July-ish timeframe, December.
Who advertises it, us or this?
We wouldn't really necessarily advertise per se. We would put the word out in the newsletter, and then the solicitation letter-
Come from them.
Would come from them, but it would have Gardner's logo on it perhaps, or at least some-
Some sort of endorsement.
Some reference that, you know, your city is aware of this and knows that we are soliciting your business, is all it says. It doesn't say the city endorses the program or believes you should do this. It just says the city is aware that we are in your community soliciting for this. That's all.
Do they go beyond the letter? Do they, you know, you don't invite them in, you don't invite them to an office meeting?
They send one letter, and then they have a certain number of days before they send a follow-up letter, and that's how they handle it. But that's why we were wanting to bring them in, so that you could get a feel for what the program was. They weren't able to be here this month, but they have several other cities they're working with in the northeast part of Kansas that they will be coming back for. I believe City of Lawrence might be one of them. We have a list from them. So before they come back in your package, if there's general interest, I'll work to try to get them on an upcoming session or agenda to talk to you guys about this.
I wouldn't mind knowing what experience has been with other communities, you know, if there's time to find out who those communities are.
There are neighboring communities that have participated, and this program's been around about two years, is how long I've been reading about it in the National League of Cities. And again, it's the organization that we belong to up until this year, that it's served by council members and, from around the country, or mayors from around the country that went out and said, we want to find a way to help our residents with this, because when it happens, most of the time, your insurance does not cover it, and you're left with a pretty large bill and pretty significant damage to your home, and, gosh, you know, we can't cover it, our insurance doesn't cover it, we feel bad. And that's how we got there, is carrying local elected officials going out with the National League of Cities, trying to find something like this to offer to the residents.
Mayor, if I could add something to that. We have had some residents come in, I don't know, even last year or two, with a solicitation of this type. I don't think it was from the same company, but we have had those solicitations. Their question was, do you know anything about this? And obviously, we didn't. And so, I don't think it went any further, and for good reason. Without the city being aware of it, this is another one of those letters that comes through the mail with no knowledge to your resident, and they don't know what to make of it. Concerned it might be a fly-by-night outfit or something.
Okay, yeah. We'll bring him in.
Yep, sounds good. Final update this evening is regarding the additional information that was requested from and provided by Walt Bussells. Everyone should have received several documents, different cities. And, you know, in conjunction with what we're doing on the board review discussion regarding this, I know that when Walt presented, there was a, you know, a comment that, a question regarding the access to additional cash, and there was a sense that there was, it wasn't clear that taking that additional cash was not a condition of a P3 arrangement, that, you know, that was just something that was possible. I mean, obviously, on a P3, you know, a certain amount of upfront payments required for the feesment of existing debt, because you can't transfer that debt, that debt has to be covered. And then Walt's comments regarding the, you know, the benefits to P3s and so on. So, you know, at this point, I think, from our perspective, the next step is due diligence. You know, is there an interest in finding out if this is something that is, that would be beneficial to our ratepayers and our employees, or not? You know, it's a significant step. I know there's a follow-up that some council members had requested with Black and Beach. I don't know if that's occurred or if it's been scheduled, but that's really what we need to decide, you know. And if there is, what are the goals? Is it to reduce rates? Is it to stabilize rates for a period of time? Is it to provide access to funds that would make road expansions for economic development so that in the future, when commercial properties come in, they are not disrupted by the eventual widening of said roads? And all those questions that are out there, you know, is it within the council's desires to be able to utilize the assets of the city to improve either the costs associated with living in Gardner, or improve the likelihood of commercial growth, economic development, and so on? And that's where we are. Is it within the desire of the council to, as Walt indicated, provide for management of those utilities in a way that ensures steady growth and investment in that utility, and assurances that regulatory challenges that may come forward are met? I don't know.
I'll speak frankly. I think, from a personal standpoint, I think I've gone as far with the P3 as I care to. I'm not ready to move forward to commit staff to go into that way. I think, personally, I feel a little bit more committed to going with the Board of Utilities and seeing if that's going to be a more efficient practice. Because I think if we go through the steps involved from the staff time, and then also the partners coming in and putting through that, the next step is going to be legal analysis, some of these other things, and, you know, the costs were thrown around $100 to $150,000 expenses to make sure our interests are protected by a proper worded agreement. And I'm not ready to go down that way when I think we might have a viable tool right here within the walls and within the city that we can lean on to put those pieces together. So if you're asking for consensus this evening, I'm not ready to lean mine towards moving forward with the P3.
Okay, we're done then.
All right.
Well, I mean, Larry's said, no, no. Chris has said, no, no.
No, I certainly think that after Walt Bussell's presentation, it's not that there's not P3 opportunities that exist out there somewhere in the future, projects, pieces.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as due diligence with this, there's majority consensus is no.
And that was a big if. It certainly wasn't anything ahead of time, Clark, on it. It's not going away.
Well, I don't think, I don't think, you know, I agree. The opportunity exists. We continue to own the utilities, and, you know, we may be in a position to better negotiate in the future, and we do know that if we do get into trouble in the future with the opportunities there as well, so, okay.
Oh, yeah, they bailed out San Apollo in California, so.
Okay. Very good. Well, staff, anything else on updates? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion Harrison, second Morrow, that we adjourn. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Ah, my shining lady.